Today is March 16, 2020. This is a meeting of the Akushnet Board of Selectmen. All rise for pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is an unusual meeting. We don't have an agenda, so we're going to free-form a little bit, or "go rogue," I think is Julie's term. I mean, we did have -- this meeting was posted. It was posted to discuss a plan of action with regard to the quarry, with regard to the public hearing coming up on the quarry. We were going to talk mostly about that, and that is still on the agenda. However, with other things going on in the Commonwealth, we decided to add that as a discussion topic. And we're learning as we go, but apparently because the state has declared a state of emergency and suspended a lot of the open meeting law restrictions, we're allowed to talk about things like COVID-19 without necessarily posting that topic 48 hours in advance. So we're here to talk a little bit about that, a lot about that, actually, and what we're going to do as a community. And just a couple of things. Let's start with this. Last night, I don't know if everyone saw it, I think you've probably heard, but the governor declared, well, he had declared a state of emergency, but he's now turned that up a bit, took some additional actions that are a bit unprecedented in, I think, all of our lifetimes, perhaps. Grocery stores and pharmacies can be open to the public, but must practice six-foot social distancing, so we're -- oh, we're not a golf course of pharmacy, but I need more space, apparently. Gatherings more than 25 people prohibited?
[laughing]
Including fitness centers, private clubs, theaters, et cetera. Somebody take account quick. Can somebody do that? Jerry, emergency services, you do that, Forrest? I'm just curious. The State Grudge Insurance Commission and commercial providers shall cover telehealth services. I think they're encouraging us to dial in rather than show up at our doctors' offices. Hospitals must postpone all elective surgeries. They want to preserve medical supplies for real issues. Significant restrictions on visitors to nursing homes and elder health facilities. Extension of RMV deadlines. It's okay to drive around with an expired license for a time, apparently. Limited RMV access. And lax unemployment guidelines to support unemployment resulting from coronavirus. Restaurants, no on-premise consumption. Going to be devastating to the restaurants. Restaurants are only able, starting tomorrow, provide takeout services only. Also, six-foot social distancing. Public and private K-12 schools closed. But also beyond that, saying, all right, it's not summer vacation, you're not going to school doesn't mean you should gather at a playground or in somebody's house and hang out. We need to practice, again, social distancing with regard to that. Preschools and daycares can remain open, but again, careful. You know, working on expanded testing, et cetera. So, you know, we're in some, again, unprecedented times. I think a topic for discussion is whether the town of Akushnet should also declare a state of emergency, because that's in line with, again, a little concerned about what exactly this does for us, but I'm told we should be doing it. It may, it does give us some powers to react to situations they develop, working with the Board of Health. The Board of Health here, Joe Correa here? But gives us some emergency powers, and I'm told also because we've done it may make us eligible for some state relief when and if those dollars become available, when and if we need those dollars. So I do have a declaration of emergency. I'm not sure, should I read this? Would that be appropriate?
Yeah, you can read that, yep.
All right, a lot of reading today. Declaration of emergency, whereas the worldwide outbreak of COVID-19 and the effects of its extreme risk, a person-to-person transmission throughout the United States and the Commonwealth significantly affect the life and health of our people as well as the economy, and is a disaster that impacts the health, security, and safety of the public. And whereas the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has issued a declaration of emergency on March 10, 2020, and determined that the immediate public action is needed to prevent, minimize, mitigate damage to public health, safety, or general welfare of the people of the Commonwealth, of Commonwealth and our property, which may otherwise result from the above-described emergency. And whereas the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has recommended that a state of emergency be declared in local communities, already telling us we should do this. And whereas the people of the community of Akushnet shall be able to depend upon guidance from the chief municipal officials, now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Akushnet, Massachusetts hereby declare that immediately and effective as of Monday, March 16, that would be today, a state of emergency is declared to exist on Akushnet. This declaration shall remain in effect until notice is given pursuant to our judgment that a state of emergency no longer exists. And this, reading this, this has not yet been approved, but a topic of discussion, and this is set up to be signed by both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health. So, gentlemen, discussion on this topic.
Well, I'd like to hear from department heads and a few brief comments about how we're going to go forward from this point on today.
Would that be, would that be a part of the state of emergency, or do you think that's a different topic? Because I do, I do think we need to do this.
Declare a state of emergency? Do I think we need to talk to the department heads and get their comments?
We do, I do intend to, I do intend to go there, but I'm just, I'm wondering if this is separate and apart.
Okay, if I declare it before we talk to the people? I mean, my comment, you know, when I'm going to go, I'm going to go with this as far as I'm concerned.
I agree, I agree.
Sort of thing. So I don't know if you want to do it at the end of the meeting or the beginning, you know, because it makes no difference that way.
Mr. Correa's just walked in.
Either way. I mean, I'm ready to do this. I think, I think we need to do this, and I just, I think.
The facts are out there.
I think the facts are out there. I think we, I'm ready, I'm ready to do this, so.
As a board member, I'm ready to do that.
But we do, we absolutely are going to, we've got all of our departments head, we actually are, we absolutely are going to the department heads for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I think it's important that we do declare a state of emergency, not to make anybody panic, but we have an obligation to make sure our employees remain safe and our people remain safe. That's our number-one duty as the Board of Selectmen, is to make sure our community is safe and our employees are safe. And I don't want to be the one to have exposure to anybody from the general public unnecessarily. I don't think there's much going on inside the town buildings that the public really needs to come in and engage with.
Well, you're going in a different direction. We're not, we're not there yet. We're on the state of emergency at this point.
You did that to him, so what do you want us to say to you?
Do, would you, I read the state of emergency.
Are you asking for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
I'm asking for a motion to approve the state of emergency.
Make a motion to approve the state of emergency.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
We don't know what discussion to have.
On to the state of emergency. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And this would go to the Board of Health? Mr. Correa, I'm assuming you'd have a similar vote as a Board of Health? Governor Baker, why don't we at this point go to the department heads? I know you, I know you both want to do that, and I've got here Governor Baker's comments about government operations, and just any one, any of the department heads want to talk about your particular, Chief, your particular operation, or what you think we should be doing?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, thank you. From what I understand, the declaration of emergency that you just declared is separate from the actions that you're going to be taking as CEOs of the town and how we work moving forward. So they, they are on concurrent paths, but they're not one in the same. Ladies and gentlemen, we have, besides Director Bergeron and myself, I believe that we're the most senior department heads in town as far as duration of serving in the community. And it's now time for the Board of Selectmen to hear from us as to what, what our expectations are, what our hopes are. We haven't talked as a group, but my sense is that we're all on the same page. And if there's any disagreement, I'm sure individual department heads will step forward, but I think it's necessary that the town be aggressive in how we deal with this crisis. And that leaves the door to then kind of back down, as opposed to starting off being passive and then trying to catch up. So we know that the governor has taken actions to limit, Mr. Chairman, as you said, gatherings of 25 or more. We have a lot of foot traffic that comes into our departments and our town hall that, yes, we do provide a service, but we also manage people. And I'll tell you that from what I've heard, a lot of the employees that are managed by your department heads and department heads answer to you are nervous and are concerned about other communities taking those aggressive actions and shutting down municipal services and Akushnet potentially remaining open in some form, and those employees being potentially exposed, and then the spillover effect. If you were to, if we were to have the Council on Aging remain open, they would be the only one in the greater Bedford area. There's going to be a spillover of folks looking for activities coming to that facility. Same with the library. There's no school. Parents are looking for the kids to do something. There's a potential that the library and the library staff would then have additional exposure at a time when we're being told that we should minimize that. So on behalf of myself, but I think on behalf of the other department heads in town, again, I would request and recommend that you, as the Board of Selectmen, consider aggressive actions that then, again, can be tamped down based on data that's coming in almost hourly, as opposed to starting off in a passive way and then we're running to, to try to catch up. I talked with, with Chief Richmond this morning, and he and I will be meeting later. Our departments are always open and will always will be open. I will tell you that the town of Akushnet has stepped up probably unknowingly. We have had one of the quietest four-day periods as far as ambulance calls that I can remember. And I think that there's a, the reason for that, people are concerned about going to the emergency room unless it is truly necessary. We're still getting the 911 calls, and the calls that we've transported were, were serious. But the, we do, to be honest, get a, a number of calls that could be handled in other ways. And I think folks are respecting the fact that the ER at St. Louis Hospital is probably not the place to be for the next couple of days, and we appreciate the citizens in town doing that. But Chief Richmond and I also talked about how we can slow down traffic, foot traffic in our buildings. We're concerned about our staff. We don't have a lot of fluff. So if we were to lose a firefighter or two, or a police officer or two, that's going to put extraordinary strain on the system. So we're going to be meeting after this and come up with a list of recommendations that we can do. For instance, burning permits in town. One of the most popular things that we do, we'll give out 900 before May 1st. With your approval, I'm going to ask Ms. Leonard to work with me later today, posting that online as a PDF, and pushing the public to the website where they could review the burning permit, print it up, sign it, and email it back to us, and we'll consider it done, as opposed to coming in and have three or four people standing on Little Best of You at any one time. And internally, I'm also rescinding vacation time that's been approved for the full-time members of our staff, first time ever in the history of the department.
Jerry?
We've never done that. We've never denied vacation time. We've always tried to make accommodations, but rescinding that for the rest of the month, we'll be hesitant to approve any in the month of April until this plays itself out. Again, we are so heavily hurt that if they are held by their primary employer, or they become ill, we need all available full-time staff to be ready to, to fill those holes so that we can respond to those 911 calls. So Chief Richmond and I are going to be talking after this meeting, coming up with some recommendations. I know he has a few ideas as well to, to lower the amount of foot traffic. And again, on behalf of all of us, thank you for today's meeting. Thank you for being interested in what our opinions are as the department heads, and thank you for being concerned about the staff and the employer of the town of Akushnet.
Well, Chief, at any one time, this is a time that we all need to be together in this, in this situation that is occurring, especially as fluid as it is, changing every day, almost hourly. So decisions need to be made, decisions need to be bloodified and blended, and so it works best for our citizens.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Chief. Other comments from department heads?
Good morning, and thank you, Gina Presser from the morning.
Good morning, David.
Good morning. If we tell them we are open at 10 o'clock today, they will come. I'm embarrassed to say how busy the library was on Saturday. I'm actually embarrassed. I normally, anyone who has been at a department head meeting with me knows how I cannot shut up about statistics. I'm horrified at what our statistics were on Saturday, because in addition to running out and getting supplies from a grocery store, people were coming to us. And the information that's out there as to how long a virus can live on plastic is varying. It's changing. Every time you watch something else, they're telling you a different amount of time. All of our books are covered in plastic, or the vast majority are covered in plastic. Our DVDs are all covered in plastic. So we could have unknowingly been checking things out to people that, you know, already had something on it. And again, I don't want to panic. I'm not panicking. I don't want people to feel panicked, but that's a genuine concern at this stage, that if we open at 10 o'clock, people will show up, and we're unknowingly putting them and ourselves, my staff, in harm's way. So I would love, if the responsible thing to do is just, if you were to say, effective immediately, the library is not opening at 10:00 AM, we can revisit this as much as you want us to, but today we will not be opening. I have most of my board here with me today in support of that decision, so we are ready to go. We have Facebook posts ready, we have signs ready at the building that staff can hang up, that we're just not opening at 10. I know my staff and I would greatly appreciate that for the health and safety of not just Akushnet residents, but the residents from other communities who will come to us because their libraries are closed.
Gina, I'm, I'm being caught a little off guard, because I had a conversation with Ms. Hebert on Friday afternoon, and we had talked about you closing, because you did have programs for Saturday, and I said, if Gina feels it's necessary to close on Saturday, I support her wholeheartedly. So I apologize that you opened for whatever reason, but.
Well, we canceled the programs, and I was under the thought, we're going to cancel these programs, and no one's going to come. That's, that's where I, where I was thinking. Our state representative holds his monthly office hours at the library. He was scheduled to be there on Saturday. I reached out to him. He still wanted to hold office hours. No one came in to see him, so no one was coming to the library for programs. They were in the building for a brief period of time, but as of Friday evening, when I last heard from Ms. Hebert, you were the only person who had answered that request to not open on Saturday. So again, I also felt on Saturday, or Friday night into Saturday, that no one's going to come. It's, we've canceled the program, so we're turning, you know, people, schools have been canceled. No one's going to show up, and just for that six hours we were open, they were all in there. And our circulation was more than triple what it normally is on a Saturday, to give you a sense of that.
I mean, the governor's proclamation that we should limit space to 25 people, you don't think would be sufficient?
I don't. We often have more than 25 people in the building at one time.
But if you were to limit it to 25, you don't think that would?
I don't think so, and I think we're going to run into, what's going to happen is my staff's going to call out sick. We all have a lot of sick time, you know, and I'm thinking that if you say that we're going to open to the public even if we're limiting it to 25, because that's what they're saying to us as of yesterday. Tomorrow, they could be telling us 10 people. We don't know. I mean, this just keeps changing, as you've said, it's so fluid. So the smart thing to do, I think, is just to say, look, I'm sorry. No one wants to check material out to people more than I do. I love those numbers, and no one wants people to have access to information more than I do. But I am saying, the responsible thing to do is to say, I'm sorry, effective now, we're not, we're not open.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, so we don't have to go through every department head, and so we don't have to sit here and look like we're being convinced. I came in today for all of you folks to understand that I came in today fully prepared to close the Council on Aging and the library effective immediately. We were going to have some discussion about town hall. I am also okay with doing that. So if that's what the Board decides to do, is to close town hall, I'm fully prepared to do that as well. I think the numbers have been diminished. I think that when more testing comes available for this COVID-19, we will learn that there's much more, many more cases than what's being announced. God forbid, I hope that the numbers don't escalate to a multiply of 100. We don't know what it's going to be, but I can tell you it's a lot worse than what we're being told. So I'm not going to take that chance with any of our employees' health or our community and our residents' health. So I'm fully prepared to take a temporary shutdown, lock the doors, so our employees can come to work and get work done and things of that nature, if that's what we decide to do. But the overall, I don't want the public coming in and exposing our employees to this infectious disease.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Presser.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Comments from others?
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Oh, the rest of town employees, public. Steve Tibble's golf course superintendent. I just had a quick question that might help the rest of us. We've gotten, the state says, okay, I have a state of emergency. Well, nobody really knows what that means. Nobody, I mean, for instance, in my case, you're supposed to have no more gatherings of 25 people. Well, we have a golf course that's 85 acres. At any one time, we'll have more than 25 people on it. Is that considered a gathering?
I think that's.
But in order for them to come and check in, they have to go through the building. So if they go through the building and there's more than 25 people wanting to check in, is that a gathering? Chief did a nice presentation about being aggressive. What exactly does aggressive mean? Does aggressive mean, as Mr. Gassper just pointed out, that we close buildings to public access, allow our employees to continue to work? So I think that's what people are confused about, at least that's what I'm confused about. I look at my staff and say, okay, well, my guys are outside 95.5% of the time, in contact with no one, so there's real no, no significant reason for me to shut down the work that my employees do. Maybe the access that we may have from salespeople and other things, but as far as the employees and the work that they do is concerned, as you just mentioned, continue to work does exclude or be excluded from the public. So I think that little bit of clarity or some other clarity in regards to just simply saying, okay, we've declared a state of emergency. Nobody really knows what that means, and there's really no definition. I mean, I have, I've got two kids, one daughter who's home from college. She doesn't even know if that means she can go from here to there.
I think, just, just not to cut you off, I think part of the state of emergency is, okay, letting public, and those are all, he's using his powers.
Those things were pointed out and defined, you know, and I just thought that if we could get, that's why I came here this morning, to see if we had somewhat more clarity as regards to the town of Akushnet, because I would assume that you folks have, you know, the say as far as what the rest of us are supposed to do, or how you would like us to proceed.
So are you saying you'd like to keep the golf course open?
Well, I'm saying, in like Mr. Gassper said, stay open, continue business as far as people coming in and working. That's the biggest concern for the employees, because, you know, the employees look at you and say, okay, well, does that mean I'm going to work next week? Am I going to get paid, or am I going to be laid off? And if I'm going to be laid off, I have to know so I can do this, that, or the other thing. So whether or not we stay open as a facility for recreation, again, that's up to you folks. My major concern right now, given the weather this week and possibly the beginning of next week, I don't think I'm going, we're going to lose a significant amount of revenue, but we are in a position where we're based on the people who come through the door. And at a certain point in time, if we don't have people coming through the door, our business is going to be significantly affected, and we're at the end of a budget year.
Well, I understand that, so you'd like to maintain the golf course?
Yeah, I'd like to maintain the golf course, and once the Selectmen deem it's appropriate for people to come back in, or if they deem we should be closed, at least I can keep things maintained, because unlike a lot of other things, if I leave and don't do my work, things start to grow. And by the time I get back to do work, I don't have time to catch up, I don't have time to prevent things that have already happened. So I was just looking for a little clarity, that's all.
Okay, we all, we all are, Mr. Tibbles, thank you. Mr. Correa, did you, I'm hoping you've got some wisdom for us.
I wanted to add some to that, if that's okay. I know that, so from, there's gatherings 25 or more people that we're supposed to avoid. That, that being said, there's also six feet of separation that we're supposed to be working with. And most of your, you know, supermarkets and, or pharmacies are basically going to be set to practice that tomorrow. You know, obviously, we know that our bars and restaurants for in-service food is going to be shut down tomorrow. The point of all this is, and to Steve, I think that the golf course being open, you know, is not an issue. You're not going to have these close public gatherings of 25 people or more. It's much more spread out than that. I think that Steve's got to keep that in mind in regards to his employees, you know, just leave some space there for the most part. Yeah, you're outside. Going outside, doing outside activities, being in the fresh air, it's a good thing. It's a good thing. But again, we're trying to, at this point, those really tight, close group activities is what we're looking to avoid. So from that standpoint, with, with the golf course, I don't really think that that's a problem. The town hall, I think, is a great idea to limit the exposure if we shut the doors and continue to work, do the best that we can with some sort of activity to help out the public from indoors. We're limiting the amount of people that are coming in and potentially exposing us, where we could potentially, the employees, you know, be passing that along somehow. But continue some sort of operation of the government. The Board of Health, you know, in, in general, will support anything that the Selectmen come up with. This is definitely a difficult, new ground. If we're going to do the best that we can to make sure that our restaurants do what they're supposed to do, and our bars do what they're supposed to do, and other than that, just try to help each other out the best way that we can.
Other comments from department heads? Mrs. Flynn?
Good morning. Hi, I just wanted to update you all on what the school department, what the status of the school department is. Dr. Bailey, our superintendent, is currently on a conference call, a statewide conference call with the Commissioner of Education, so we should have some more details after that. However, as we all know, public schools in Massachusetts are ordered closed by the governor for three weeks, for a three-week period. We had already planned to close for this week. Prior to this, we had been making preparations probably for the past two weeks, thinking of what, what we can do to respond and react to this news that's changing every minute, frankly. We had already closed our buildings to outside rentals and groups. I know that affected your PJ Keating hearing, but we did take that under, you know, good advisement, and we've closed, we had taken the steps to close our buildings as of last week. We will be meeting with some department heads, school department heads, very soon to discuss what we need to do for our students to continue the learning, to provide some home learning opportunities, because we don't want them to regress in their learning. We want them to continue to read, to do whatever they can do to maintain. We want them to continue to read, to do whatever they can do to maintain some of their learning. So we're going to be meeting about that very soon. In terms of students who are looking for, to replace school lunch and breakfast, we know that we provide a great service to all of our students, whether they're free, reduced, or paid. Right now, all Akushnet and Dartmouth students are eligible at New Bedford feeding sites. There are some schools in New Bedford, public schools, that are offering free school lunch and breakfast to all students, regardless of whether they're eligible for free or reduced lunch. That's going to start tomorrow. So from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and we'll be getting this information out, but I'm just getting this right now from our food service director. But from 11:30 a.m., from what I understand, and I apologize if things change, but this is the best information I have right now, you students can go to get a free breakfast or lunch for the next day. It's a grab and go. You cannot stop and eat it there. You just have to pick it up at various schools around the city of New Bedford. And right now, those schools are, and I'll start with the one that I believe is closest to us here in Akushnet, would be the Campbell Elementary School near Trukey's. Another one located in the north end is the Lincoln Elementary School. We also have the Gomes School, Carney Academy, Hayden McFadden, Keith Middle School, and Roosevelt Middle School. So those are areas that students can go and get any free and reduced, any, I'm sorry, any school lunch and breakfast, regardless of their, Akushnet students as well, regardless of their eligibility for the programs. We are going to be looking to see what we can do to perhaps bring that closer to our residents here in Akushnet. So that's going to be something that we will be discussing in the next day or two, and we'll keep you posted about that. Thirdly, our custodians are working hard in the buildings. They are some of the few staff that we have in the buildings today. The buildings as of tomorrow will be closed to most staff. We're asking people to pick up any personal belongings that they need for the simple reason that, once these custodians clean an area, we want it closed, locked, off limits, ready to go for when we can open our doors back. So we don't want to prohibit people from coming in, but again, it's another step that we're taking really to, to encourage social distancing that we're all being told to do. And so once that happens, we will only have a few, you know, really essential employees in the school buildings. So, and I want to, you know, take the opportunity to thank our custodians. They're the ones that are really, you know, working hard in all this. We are lucky to have the Bristol County Sheriff's Office inmate work program in the schools today and tomorrow, perhaps some other days. So we're getting some assistance from them that way to really clean, go. But, you know, our custodians are really, you know, being asked to do a very, 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 their job has been made more difficult, so I just want to, you know, take the opportunity to thank them here. Again, like I said, department heads will be meeting to figure out some things, some of the operations, what that means for, you know, who needs to be here, what needs to be open. So we'll have more information after the commissioner's call and after our building, after our meeting tomorrow. So basically, I just want to say that we're going to try to continue the home learning as much as possible. We understand that this is difficult for families who, you know, need things for their kids to do, but we hope, you know, our, the thought is also that we hope people take this seriously and try not to, you know, act, they're saying, don't act like this is an April school vacation, because we want people to stay home and stay, you know, out of, out of the general public. So it's a good opportunity to go, to go ride a bike outside, right? So thank you very much, and we'll give you posted.
The school does have Chromebooks for students and lessons on them? Is that something that we're going to be exploring?
Mr. Oliver, do you want to?
To pursue, just to bring up that point that you just mentioned, that this isn't a three-week school vacation, that students should stay, you know, home, I think, home. I've seen people congregating already, you know, young people, go to my friend's house, we've heard it on TV, brought up, so.
We're, you know, everyone should discourage that as much as possible. I think the hope that is if everyone limits that, then maybe we can come out of this in three weeks, or, you know, maybe it won't be as longer if we can try to get ahead of it. So we certainly don't want students to be, you know, congregating and hanging out, but like I said, tomorrow, we're going to be, we'll have more information on, on what families can do to keep their students engaged in their learning.
Because I think that's important, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, absolutely.
Deana, Deana from the library was saying something about her program starting at 10 o'clock. If I could make a motion to close the public library until further notice, in the Council on Aging until further notice, I'd like to do that from Ms. Deana Brassa and others. Sylvia?
Yep.
I know, I've seen is they're most vulnerable to this infectious disease, so.
No, and actually, I want to thank you for that, to the Sylvia Council on Aging Director. We opened at 8 o'clock this morning, and when I left on Friday, and this is not a complaint, this is just where we were coming from, we were under the impression that we were not allowed to cancel programs or close our building to the public without your blessing. So until I spoke to Julie and Chuck Magasper last night, we thought we were still a go. We came in last night, canceled things after you told us that we could, but we resolved them to the public. And by the time I left at quarter of nine this morning, we had eight people, none from Akushnet, who were bored and were coming in just because they were bored. And so I think, you know, just to support what Deana said with the library, is with everyone else being closed, if we're not, we're just going to become a defeatary. We're going to get that influx from other communities. I know my staff is scared. Most of my staff is elderly themselves, so they're in the high-risk category. So I just want to thank you for making that decision.
Could I, well, before we, could I go next? You know, I, what I heard Ms. Brasse say is, you know, it feels like families in Akushnet are underreacting to this problem. Conversely, I don't want to overreact. And I, and I, you know, I struggle a little bit with, I mean, we're the government, and I think we set the tone for the community. And, you know, I think if we're locking government buildings, that sends a message that, you know, just, I'm reluctant to continue to feed the panic. And, you know, I've been watching, I'll just finish, you know, watching and reading, I mean, and even a physician on the news this morning, and I was on the call with the Department of Public Health Friday, and the Department of Public Health's basically saying that children don't transmit this disease well, that children may have it, but the disease is transmitted when they cough and sneeze, and that's not the way this virus affects children. So even if they've got it, they're not really spreading it to each other. And for that reason, the children aren't as risk. They're not at risk to each other, they're not at risk at bringing it into community and spreading it. And there was a, you know, there's a physician on the news this morning that said, you know, we're, we're closing our schools, and we're closing our schools is adding to the problem, because now that we've closed our schools, we've taken 20% of our medical workforce who now have to stay home and deal with their children. So, you know, I, I'm, and I get the tone from the other two selectmen, I get that. But I'm, you know, I'm kind of reluctant to become the nanny state and tell people that, you know, we understand what's best for you, and we're going to lock our buildings so that you can't come into them and make your own decisions. And, you know, CVS is open, Stop &amp; Shop's open, my company's open, the world continues in a big way, and, and government's saying, we're, you know, we, we are the community leaders, yet we're going to lock our doors and keep you out. And I'm, I'm struggling with that a little bit.
And I respect what you're saying, and I wouldn't want to be in your position.
I'm not singling you out.
No, 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 and I know you're not, but I'm just going to say to you, I think you need to trust your department heads. Chief Gallagher and I opened the Council on Aging yesterday for an hour, and we went out on social media for anybody who was feeling food insecure, that they could come, they could access our food pantry. We only gave out four bags. So I would take that as, and it got shared 4,000 times. So I know people knew we were there. So I think people are preparing. I think people are looking to you and to your department and trust us. We know, we know our people.
But they're making, they're making decisions, they're making decisions versus coming to a government building, looking for help, and the doors locked to them.
But they can still get us by phone, they can, we're still going to be accessible. We're not going anywhere. We're just asking people not to gather.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to second Mr. Gassper's motion.
And repeat the motion, Mr. Gassper.
I started with a motion to close up public library and our Council on Aging, because Ms. Brassa said that she had some concerns about programs running at 10 o'clock. It's 5:10. She's going to do something via the phone to make contact with somebody to close programs. I would have liked to allow her to do that. I'd also like to make the comment, Mr. Chairman, that viruses have no boundaries.
And I'd like to say also too, we're in a time that we've had no reported incident here in the Town of Akushnet whatsoever, yet we're proceeding ahead with these decisions. Personally, I feel, you know, I, I understand completely. When we talked on Friday, I was, you know, still going this way, you know, do we need to shut it down right away? Do we need to do these things? But times, you know, 48 hours, we made a big difference. We've had the president come out Friday night, declare his national state of emergency. We had the governor come out yesterday, declare a state of emergency for Massachusetts. I just can't be cavalier and say, oh, nothing's happening, how can we close down this stuff? We haven't seen anybody get it. So, but in this case, you know, after hearing all the decisions over the last five days, you know, I'd rather be a little safe than sorry, or very safe than sorry.
So the motion is to repeat, the motion is to close the Council on Aging and the library?
Effective immediately.
What does close mean? Are we staffing the buildings? Are we locking the doors?
I would prefer that we have somebody inside the building, at least one employee. So if somebody wants to make a phone call and needs accommodations, i.e. Ms. Hadley-Sylvia or the Council on Aging, if we have a senior that is in desperate need of something, they're very comfortable with Ms. Sylvia, when she's there, they answer the phone. You're not going to be exposed to a virus if nobody's coming in and out of your building. So if Ms. Sylvia's inside the building, she can get some things done that she needs to get done. She's being paid, she can answer the phone. If nobody calls, nobody calls, it's fine. But we should have our phone lines open for our residents. So we're not completely shutting things down. There's still an open line of communication. We're just limiting the exposure of the virus if somebody were to have the virus.
So signs on the door, signs on the door of the library and the Council on Aging saying, call us at this number if you need services?
Well, the number ain't going to change. They know the number to the Council on Aging.
Well, let's put the, let's put the number on the door, why not?
And they'll be in the building to answer the phone, but exposing our employees, especially our seniors, I talked to Ms. Sylvia yesterday, you know, seniors are most vulnerable to this disease. The stats are already out there. Again, I, I will say this, and I hope that I'm wrong, and I hope that a lot of people are wrong, but the numbers that we have be given, I don't believe those numbers to be correct. I think that numbers are going to be a lot higher with more of these tests are available, and we'll see that coming over the next few days.
And the closing's effective immediately, as far as not making the motion.
All right, motion second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Other department head comments?
Real quick.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning. I'll keep it very brief. Chief Gallagher and I have had ongoing conversations for the past week or so, most recent being about five minutes before this meeting. Despite other closings, Akushnet Police Department is not going to close down, we're not going to lock the doors. Doors are going to be open. We're going to be making some arrangements with maybe some of the more administrative duties that we perform. We may resort to handling it via phone, to try to limit interactions that way, but the lobby's going to be open. If somebody has a true emergency to come in, call 911, people are going to answer the phone, put you to rest there. As far as, like I said, those lesser, lesser issues, report requests where people come in, call on the phone, we'll mail it out to you, email, we'll correspond via email and whatnot for those, those lesser issues. That's probably the vast majority of the foot traffic that we have coming in and out of the station. If we can reduce that and go more of an online, more of a phone presence.
And you know, staff's behind, I mean, the reception's behind glass.
Correct. We've been taking measures, you know, in the lobby itself and in the public interview room up front to do as much as we can.
I think that's appropriate.
Regularly disinfecting that, and the, just so you know, the academy that we've been hosting at our department has been suspended for 60, for 30 days as of now. So the number of, the amount of foot traffic in and out of the police department is going to reduce drastically. Offices are also taking precautions they need to take at the start of their shifts and in between calls when needed. So just to assure the public that we're open for business and we'll, we'll handle what we need to handle.
That's it.
Thank you, Chief.
Other department head comments? Chairman, I, I'm sorry. I did have a question for the golf committee. Let's go, let's go Mr. Deroche first.
When is your projected opening date?
It's supposed Wednesday.
On Wednesday.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Rebecca Tomlinson, welcome.
Thank you. Rebecca Tomlinson, Akushnet Animal Control Officer. We had our annual rabies clinic scheduled for next Sunday over at the Department of Public Works on Middle Road. That has been canceled. But Dr. Gomont has offered to, offered to set up rabies vaccines for all Akushnet residents through appointments only, and it will be Monday through Thursday, and hopefully when she gets.
For their pets?
For their pets. For their pets, absolutely. It will be the same price, $10 per animal. They will not charge an office visit, and that is going to be extended for Akushnet residents only.
Can we get that on the website?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And she's going to try to start it this coming Wednesday, and it'll be from 1:30 in the afternoon to 4:00 p.m., again, through appointments only for Akushnet residents. And I was on a webinar the Friday afternoon, and the CDC, as far as on Mass, MDR, was saying that we should postpone all of these because we generally have quite a bit of people. So, and as far as my interaction with people, I'm obviously still going to be working, but I'm going to try to handle most of my calls, if they're not emergency, through, via phone.
Thank you.
Mr. Sonny, on?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just to answer Mr. Deroche's question regarding the Chromebooks, Chris Oliver, chief technology officer of some of these schools in the town. A decision was made, we don't have enough Chromebooks for every student at the school, so the decision was made to keep the Chromebooks in school, one so we can sanitize them. And just because we didn't want to create an inequality between this student gets one and this student does not get one. So that's, but with that said, we are looking at, like Mrs. Flynn said, a number of online learning opportunities. We have the last survey we did a couple of years ago. We have an internet penetration rate in the town of approximately 85 to 90%. So between the Comcast Internet Essentials Program, which is for those students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, they can also qualify for deeply discounted internet, and a lot of families have taken advantage of that. So considerably, we, we do have a lot of families using internet. We're doing the best we can. We're going to continue to pump out information via social media, via our website, and our email blasts. But on a separate note, Ms. Hebert asked me to speak briefly about how I can support the board and the town government with working remotely with public meetings. As you know, government has relaxed town open meeting laws, and I'm ready to support you should the need come that we need to do video conferencing for our public meetings. I've had a conversation with Nick from Cable, and we're, actually, I'm pleased to announce we would be able to, using Google Hangouts, which is a free service that Google provides, and apparently a lot of towns government is using Google Hangouts, is that we can actually broadcast the video conferencing right over Channel 18, I believe it is. So that wouldn't be a problem. The public could still watch us interact with one another, but it would all be done through video conferencing. So in addition, I'm prepared to help anyone that works remotely have full access to town hall and government network resources, as well as, you know, anything in relation to our networking.
Chris Oliver, question. Is there a way to Skype us together or some type of technology like that to?
Yes, so Google Hangouts, through Gmail, through.
Google Hangouts.
Google Hangouts is very similar to Skype. It's free. A lot of governments are already using Gmail. A lot of local governments are using Gmail. The school department uses Gmail and Google. It's all one, think of it as one suite. So you have Gmail, you have Google Forms, you have Google Hangouts. Google Hangouts is essentially video conferencing. It's free video conferencing in which Mrs. Leonard would create a calendar invite for the board members, for anyone that's gonna be presenting at the meeting, and she would send that calendar invite out via email, and they would click on the link when the meeting's ready to start, and then everyone would be brought together, and there would be one...
Visually or verbally?
Both. You can have, the option is you can do both visually. People that don't have access to a computer, there's a conference bridge that they can call into, and they can just speak via voice.
As a permanent record of the meeting?
The permanent record would be through cable, because what would happen is we would actually set up a computer in the control room here, which would pump that video feed out, that conference out, right through cable, and that would be documented.
Perfect. Ms. Heber, cancel.
I just wanted to add, I know we talked too about the phone lines and having access for if we needed to work more remotely or even in reference to the CUA at the Library, if people aren't in the buildings, that we have access to have people still call the town lines, and we can, it would essentially go to people's cell phones so that, I don't know if you wanted to mention that.
Yeah, I'll just briefly mention that our phone system that we installed a couple of years ago here at Town Hall allows us to take calls remotely via a cellphone app. So we would use the cellphone app when someone were to, if someone were to call the Town Hall or any of the departments aparting ways, it would actually, when they select the number off the auto attendant, it would actually ring someone's cellphone instead of, it would just be like they're sitting at their office phone at their desk, but it would ring their cellphone. And they can also make calls through that app, and it would show up on the caller ID as the town of Ucushan.
So I think we're going from one conversation to another, and the beginning part of the conversation is like, okay, we don't know if we want to shut down the Council on Aging and the Library, and now we're taking this to an extreme where we're saying none of us are gonna come in and convene and have meetings, and that's somewhere maybe three weeks, two weeks, wherever this epidemic is gonna end up, and whatever role we're all gonna have to play. That's planning for the distant future, hopefully never.
Viruses have no boundaries.
I agree. They do not have any boundaries, and you could be carrying it and not have any symptoms of it, and you can spread it. So, and I think the multiplier on that is for every person that has it, four people can get it. So I have done a lot of research on COVID-19, Mr. Cabral, so I do know a little bit of what I'm talking about, and viruses don't have boundaries. I think Chief Gallagher will contest to that. So I think we're talking about video conferencing and everything else. We'll get to whatever we need to get to. I like the idea that you and Nick are working on a plan to be able to have that in place in case that time comes. I don't think that's, you know, gonna come this week or next week, but we never know what's gonna, how much crap's gonna hit the fan, right?
Agreed. Just wanted you to know that it is, it will be available to you should you need it.
Mr. Deroche.
I want to get back to your initial comment where you says we don't have enough Chromebooks to give to our students. What's the numbers? Are we talking about half the students? Three quarters of the students? We don't have enough?
I would say between 50. We have approximately 450 Chromebooks. We have over 1,000 students.
So has any decision been made for alternative...
We will make packets available. So exactly, so that's what I was once, you know, Mr. Oliver concluded here. I wanted to add that. We will have packets available. You know, this is all gonna be developed in the next day or two, or, but there will be for those students who don't have access to online, packets will be made available in areas hopefully throughout town. You know, a lot of this, as all departments face, it's changing every day. We're doing the best that we can to react to the information we have at hand. So I think our focus, our focus last week was to, you know, start to shutter down and close down schools. Now our focus is how do we continue things, just like yours is as well. So we're hoping that we're not going to go to the extreme measures, but I think we all have to have them in the back of our minds and be prepared. So that's what we'll be talking about. We're gonna switch gears now and talk about, you know, how we can get that out. And again, that is an excellent point with the Chromebooks. We do not have one for every student, and also it's a matter of cleaning those and sanitizing those. That was of great concern to our staff and us and students is making sure that the keyboards and the computers in the labs and the classrooms are sanitized daily. So that's just, you know, one more little consideration. So there's a lot of little considerations, but, you know, we're gonna do the best we can to get that information out to the students in alternative ways, I think.
Now, this might sound old school, but do we still have books? Are students gonna be given class assignments? You know, I assume there's gonna be some time to work all this out, yes, but if we're looking three weeks, we take the first week to come up with some plan with class assignments, you know, and...
I can speak briefly to this.
You know, I don't have a student anymore. My daughter's 30, so I haven't had to deal with this.
So we're trying to put the information together, you know, daily as new information comes in. The message from the Commissioner of Education was really to do our best to keep the spark of learning alive, to continue to get students engaged in some way, shape, or form. And, you know, that may look different to every school district.
Right.
However, we're still, you know, we're gonna hopefully work on that today, get some more information out to parents and families, and we'll take it from there.
Yeah, well, I understand. It is a fluid situation. We're working on it every day.
I think we can post educational links to websites, to our website. We had talked about that. Different areas that parents can access content, alternative content. So it's all, you know, it's all developing, and, you know, we hope to have more information for everyone as soon as possible.
Mr. Oliver, just final comment. I'd suggest that you get us positioned to take the next step if we need to.
Sure.
And hopefully we don't have to, but if this progresses as it could, it'd be nice to be able to pull the trigger on that quickly. So I would say, you know, have us ready to do that if we don't have to do it. That would be...
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
So I know we're talking about a lot of different things, and some of it is future, but one of the things that I think the Selectmen should consider is, and it relates to this, is regular meetings, the Selectmen's meetings. You know, Planning Board has meetings and hearings scheduled. How do we want to approach that? And that's where this might come in, that, you know, if we determine that, you know, we want to take the Selectmen's meetings and instead of, you know, keeping this exposure that we have it online, as Chris had said, we can do that and still give access to the public. Same thing for other boards, and I know that other boards have reached out and they're concerned, you know, the Finance Committee has canceled their meeting for this Wednesday because they weren't sure where everything was going, but in case there are other boards that want to take advantage of this, that we might have it accessible for them.
I'm not very happy, all of us in this little hot room, being very honest. So I'll just, I'll say that out loud. I mean, this just doesn't feel, as we're talking about this spreading pandemic, we've got 27 people crowded into this little warm room. It just doesn't feel like a good idea, but let's, just a couple of things, let's try to move this on. Pam Levante, the Town Clerk, could I invite you to the microphone, please, for talking about the town meeting on May 11th? Any thoughts as to whether or not we should, what we should do with that?
Well, as...
Maybe too early to talk about that, but I've got it written.
Yeah, I do have some deadlines coming up. Nomination papers are required for the election, which will be held on that Saturday, May 16. The deadline to turn the nomination papers in is the 26th of March at 5:00 p.m.
Well, since we have accepted and declared a state of emergency, I have a piece of paper here in front of me that says we can amend from the state government, Governor Baker announced a package of legislation, that we can postpone town meetings by 30 days.
Yes, we can.
Now, I know this is all new in that, but how will that play out against our recent article approved last year of the election being after the town meeting? So, you know, I don't need an answer, but I'm just saying these are questions now that are gonna need to be answered.
Right.
You know, if we postpone the town meeting for 30 days, is the, are we gonna assume that the election is gonna be postponed accordingly? You know, it says also here that the Select Board can postpone town meetings. We can postpone the meeting past June 30th if need be. So these are just two points that I'm bringing up that need to be considered and decided upon, you know, as we move on from here.
Yes. One of the emails that I received over the weekend does state that the Board of Selectmen, as long as we make, the Board of Selectmen make a vote stating that you have the opportunity to choose a future date, but you have to set the time and date certain for when that meeting would be scheduled.
Right. And this point, that'd be impossible to do.
Right.
We don't know where we're going with this.
At this point, that's correct.
Right.
Miss Levante, I would say it's probably early. I mean, May 11th is a ways away. I think it's probably early, but just sort of pointing at that date as being an important event in the town, and...
Yes.
I think, you know, maybe two weeks out from now, maybe three, no longer, we should be thinking about whether that's something we should be adjusting.
Yes, I'm already gathering.
But just, I, I've got a rough agenda here, and this is one of the things that was on it. So Mr. Merritt, did you want to come to the microphone or related to...
Can, I don't know what he's gonna talk. Can I just address, Miss Levante, when we're talking about elections? So Pam, that discussion that Mrs. Deroche brought up is a valid discussion. Is there anything that says because town meeting, just because the Board of Selectmen may postpone town meeting, and I think the postponement, when the governor did this, I think the postponement of town meeting is because of the time we're operating in today, the current time.
That's correct.
So as far as the planning for town meeting and the budgetary process and everything else that's gonna take place, we may want to push town meeting out for planning reasons because we may be delayed by two or three weeks, right?
Right.
I think that the conversation about the election is two different things from the town meeting. Just because it says that it's held two weeks after...
Yeah.
Does that really apply? Do we really need to...
Comply with the bylaw?
Comply with this because...
Not during the state of emergency.
Right. So if things were to clear, we could do the election.
Yeah.
And if we move town meeting out two weeks, let's say two weeks, for sake of arguments right now, two weeks out from that date, we could still do it that way. We could still have the town election if everything's deemed good as far as virus concerns go, and we could still have the town election, and three weeks, four weeks later, we could do the town meeting.
That's correct.
So you're saying we can change any bylaw during the state of emergency?
I don't, I can't say any bylaw.
That doesn't feel right.
Yeah. I can't say bylaw.
That doesn't feel, that doesn't feel right. Okay.
Yeah.
So what are you, what are you saying?
No, what I am saying is that the Elections Division did state that we could make that adjustment during the state of emergency.
So we have the flexibility within two weeks. We don't have to do that two-week thing, or it's gotta be two weeks after the election, is what I'm trying to say.
Right, right.
Thank you.
If I can, Mr. Chairman, the one thing that I think everybody needs to do by law...
Should you go to the mic? I don't know if the mic's gonna pick you up quick. I don't know.
In relationship to town meeting, there are also warrant articles that are required by state law to have public hearings by different boards prior to that meeting, and there's advertising that needs to go out, sometimes 14 days before that first meeting. So if you push that up, there's a month in between there, that those public hearings have to be held, you know, which can be held actually an hour before town meeting, but still have to think about that process as well. That's all I had to say.
Ugh. No, you're, just, this is all, we're breaking new ground with everything we do here.
The School Department is one of those, but we have had our public hearing on the school budget, and we've posted it, so, you know, if that discussion comes up, we're all set with the School Department.
And the town meeting and the town elections are held in the school building...
Correct. Are held in the school, so that is a consideration.
Which is close to the public.
Correct.
For the foreseeable future. So there's that.
So as far as the public hearing, I think Mr. Merritt's side was like zoning that requires a public...
Well, those are the ones that I'm familiar with. I know that, you know, when you were speaking too about, you know, having a warrant article reviewed by the Finance Committee, I don't, you know, know the rest of all that, but just take that into consideration.
And there's a grace period anyway. When we post the warrant, there's a requirement prior to town meeting, when we post the warrant, it's gotta be done 30 days.
15 days.
15 days, so that's consideration for everybody with the hearing, public hearing process anyway, and we'll, after, the board's gonna need to make a decision today on whether or not the board will allow other committees and boards to have public hearings moving forward. So I think that's another discussion we need to have today before we close.
Yeah, we've got, we have to talk about moving the PJ Keating hearing, but let's defer that. I don't think that's relevant to everyone, so...
If I could just have a couple more seconds. As you know, the traffic in the Town Clerk's office, it's primarily the foot traffic. The Registry of Motor Vehicles has been, to the best of my knowledge, shut down, or will be shut down...
Suspend licenses for 60 days.
Correct. And primarily, we've been doing a lot of birth certificates and marriage certificates. So I talked briefly with Julie about that on Friday. Between that and the dog licensing, those are the issues that we have right now. So I would, our bylaw does state that the dog licensing deadline is scheduled for March 31st. So we would need a vote of the Board of Selectmen to extend that deadline.
60 days sufficient?
At this point, I would be happy with 30 days to give them until April 30th.
Just for, just for the dog licenses, we're only talking about right now, marriage licenses.
For the dog licenses.
We'll handle marriage licenses on a as-needed basis.
But if I suggest 60 is appropriate, just because we don't know where this is going and that, could I get a motion to extend the deadline for the issuance of dog licenses by 60 days?
So moved.
And I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you.
And we should, I think we should, you know, encourage Ucushan residents to avoid unnecessary contact.
Right.
And to avoid unnecessary trips to public places, and avoid coming into the clerk's office if they don't have to, and, you know, no urgency to get your dog, urgency to, well, I think your marriage has probably been canceled, not yours.
I hope not.
And anybody, anybody else, I mean, just everybody's marriage is, you know, you can't have it in the place you thought you were having it.
If I can, so I know this is something that, you know, you will be discussing what you're gonna do with the public buildings as a whole, if you're looking to vote to close to the public, but I do know that some towns that have decided to close to the public have also said, contact certain departments so you can make an appointment on an as-needed basis. So if there's something that, you know, say the clerk's office can handle, you know, over the phone or however, they'll do that, but if it's something that you need to come in, they'll work with you and be able to at least come out and hand it to you, and it's not inviting the public into the building. So something for you to consider as you have to make that decision. Doing appointments as needed.
Right. Is there anything that could be done electronically? I know official documents and stamps and that sort of thing. It does narrow it down.
A lot of, the primary functions are definitely the foot traffic and the phone calls. I started to put a list of things together about what we could do remotely and what we absolutely could not do. And I think that because so many other organizations such as the R and B are going to be closed during this time period, I think it would not really be much of an issue, because they can get their marriage certificate from you, but they can't do anything with it until the registry is back up and running.
Right, right.
And again, we don't want to encourage people to be coming in. So essentially, if we make it harder for them to make it in, I think we're all gonna be better off, and that's a protection for them as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Other half? Yes? Dana.
I just wanted to clarify, what do we...
I'm gonna need you over there, 'cause I got a question for you. Mr. Tiddles left, 'cause he works outside.
Correct, correct. So under the same principles that everybody else is concerned with, I was just wondering where we stood with regards to opening the golf course. We intend, we're supposed to open on Wednesday, this Wednesday. Each customer that comes through has to interact with either myself or the pro within a six-foot space. So, however, Steve's group, they might be isolated from physical contact or close proximity to those customers. We are seemingly within that area, so where do you guys stand with regards to that?
To be determined. This is the first I heard that you were gonna open on Wednesday. And if I read the papers, you know, I ski, the ski resorts are all closed, golf courses around the Boston area are closing. It's something we're gonna have to talk about and make a decision.
Dana, did the Golf Committee have any meaning on your reopening date? I know they usually set that reopening date.
That's usually determined by Steve and myself, when he deems that the grass is now starting, you know, it's hitting that 50-degree where it starts to grow. He has to clean up from the winter. grow. He has to clean up from, from the winter. We have some projects taking place that we wanted to get ahead of before opening, and every season is different, but we, we usually shoot for St. Patty's Day within two or three days. And so March 18th was our, our date this year, which we just decided probably about, I don't know, a week and a half ago, that he was tentatively putting out that date. And seeing where we're falling with regards to rainfall. I mean, obviously, if we got it with seven inches of rain before we opened on that date, say, all right, let's just wait another week. So we kinda play it by ear. When it, when it's percolating and it's ready, we go. So, I mean, we are at that, that cross right now where it, you know, we probably could've, outside of the projects that we have being conducted right now, we probably could've done it a week ago, but we kinda wanna clean that up a bit. So we had Wednesday stated as our date, slated as our date.
Can tee times be booked online?
They can book them online. However, they can't purchase them.
Not today.
Yeah.
I just tried, it wasn't worse.
So I'll, I'll take a look at that when we get there. But we have been booking online and they are, T sheet has been open as of last Wednesday for this week, this Wednesday's bookings. So, but they can't pay online.
Is it possible that that can be made?
I think that is, I'm not sure if that's a decision by the Selectmen or if it's a decision by mass law, but we don't, we don't ever accept online payments. So everything has to be processed.
I'd make a vote that you can. I, I don't think we would prevent you from doing that.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, could I ask you a question? The demographics of folks who show up at this time of the year during the weekday.
Older week, older is weekday, and then weekends is basically everybody, you know, and our demographics is blue collar, working-class guys.
But you do know that a large, well, not a large, maybe 50% is from out of town.
Yes.
We do call water. Maybe over 50%.
Uh, that is more so as we hit the summer months. We see a lot of commuting golfers from Boston, Cape Cod, Providence this time of year. You'll see a lot of local guys 'cause they haven't moved into their cottages. But once the warmer weather sets in, summer sets in, you do see a larger influx of commuting golfers. But we still will see, due to our reputation and our conditions in Bryson, we will, as soon as we open, we'll start seeing guys from Rhode Island and Boston.
Especially if other places are closed.
Yes, absolutely. And, and our reputation is, we're one of the few golf courses, the way that the course drains and it's maintained.
It's working itself.
Is we perk usually sooner than most. So if you go out there today, I mean, we're not at peak shape, but it looks like it's ready to.
To go.
Yeah, to go, definitely. So.
It is up. I could, I could book for Friday if I wanted to.
So it's, I mean, I'm on the fence with it.
Yeah.
Right.
With regards to opening, however, by, by opening, that puts myself and Isaac on the front line to be that transmission thing. So if you do have it, but you're not showing symptoms, I get it. The next guy that comes in.
Well, I think, I think somebody's gonna, somebody's gonna, you know, I mean, in general, for town employees, we've got hand sanitizers everywhere. We should have antibacterials everywhere and provided somebody doesn't cough or sneeze on you, they're not transmitting.
How, how do we control that?
How do you, you can't, well, you can't control them not sneezing on you, but.
But then, then we don't.
This isn't the zombie apocalypse, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Not yet.
Not yet.
But we also have to consider the.
That's doubled in Iran and Italy on Sunday. That doesn't just happen.
But we also have to consider that you're gonna have groups of people for, you get backed up on a par three, you might have eight people, sitting there talking going, hey, what about the coronavirus?
It's, it's touchy. I mean, as I've said, I've already been talking to Isaac and like, what are we gonna do with the food? Do we wanna pre-prep sandwiches, package everything? Or do we just wanna hold off on surges?
Right, right.
You know.
Or just let one summers off.
You got a dry food window?
I think the next season.
Next season, I was gonna say, we got an escalator, we'll make, we'll make a.
Credit cards, white man.
It's, it's not an easy call, Dana, and you know, I, I don't wanna put anybody in harm's way, right, in, in.
Right, it's not an easy.
You know, I, I don't know. I, I've seen that golf course open a lot later in the season due to weather. So, you know, I'm okay with making a call and postponing it for, at a week at a time for you guys right now. I, I don't wanna put you or Mr. Isaac in any, anyone in harm's way of this thing. So, and as Mr. DeRosa alluded to, we do have people from the outside. They come from Boston, Quincy, Cambridge, they come from all over. And that's where the disease is, you know, they have some big outbreaks up in the Boston area and you get one of them persons to come down here with a group and start golfing. So I mean, if, if, look, if, if you guys are okay with it, I'm okay with postponing the opening for a week.
Good player by you.
If the board's gonna be okay with it, that's, I, I don't have a problem. We've opened in seasons, God, with inclement weather.
Yeah, we've been snow, we've had snow in April, right?
So, I mean, it's not gonna bust the season by saying, but we're gonna take it one week at a time.
It's not essential government operations.
And I will speak to the fact that this time of the season, you're not seeing massive amounts of rounds. This time of the season, people are coming in to buy their season passes. So you're just prolonging that, the majority of that for a week or two away. You're still gonna get that revenue, but what you are gonna miss out on day like today is you're gonna miss out on 10 or 15 guys coming.
Yep, you're gonna get some PO'd people that can't go and play golf, but you know what? It's not their job to make a decision on the welfare of this community, it's us. So I think it's, you know, that's the, that's the tough decision that we're making today. And as much as it sucks, and I'll say that right on TV, it sucks, but we have to do what is in the best interest of our community and our employees, and that's what we're trying to define today. So I'm okay with, I'll make a motion to postpone the opening of the golf course. You don't have to second it.
Can we talk about it?
Talk about it.
Two days away.
Can we talk about it?
Yeah, talk about it.
I'm, I'm conflicted on this one. I, I don't see this as being essential government operations. And, and I, I don't, I don't see a lot of risk in opening, but conversely, I don't see it as being essential to the, you know, not necessary.
What shifts do you want? I'll put you on the desk.
Say a little more time? I'm going to work from here. My job continues without interruption, you know, we, we've got hand sanitizer, we've got, we've got, you know, sheets, we deal with the public. Our branches are open, you know, business is normal for us, so.
How, how long do you?
And we care about our employees too.
How long do you wanna make this? Week to week?
I just, I think I said that. I said, you know, we'll take this on, on, on a weekly basis and we'll provide guidance as the information comes in from the CDC. And we know what the hell is going on, we'll provide that. But, you know, Dana, he's out there hustling with everybody and, and, look, they can have more than 25 people in that little clubhouse. I mean, in, in the pro shop, I mean, it's, it's, it's a very small room, half the size of this. And I've seen people all flabbergasted inside here 'cause everybody wants to rush, pay and get up their ass on a cot and go out there and call. So, you know, we don't know what's going on. That's, it's the unknown. It's the unknown, is, is that's, you have to worry about.
Are you, was it upsetting to go week to week?
No, 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 no. I, I think that's fair. Kinda see where the numbers are falling with regards to the spread or no, or lack of spread, then, then we can kinda determine.
Then the board's likely gonna make a decision.
Absolutely. I mean, we're ready to go Wednesday. We'd be ready to go next Wednesday.
The following Wednesday. Well, Dana, I would amend the motion.
We want the employees to be there and do what they need to do, continue operations.
Mr. Gasper, did you have a motion? Did you make a motion?
I did, to, to cancel the opening for Wednesday and postpone until the following Wednesday. And we'll, we'll figure that out as it moves transpires.
Right, and I'll second that.
Second that.
Motion.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so delayed for a week. And I just, I mean, my, my comment, you know, is not in, and I think a couple of things, it's not intended to minimize or be insensitive to what's going on, but, you know, this is, I, I wanna take this seriously, but it's not the collapse of society either.
Nope.
And, you know, we, we go to, we go to Stop and Shop and we expect the cashier to be at Stop and Shop, and we expect the person bagging our groceries to be at Stop and Shop. Yet we're in here saying, you know, we need to amend our operations as a government. And I, I, so I'm struggling a little bit. My office is open, I'm going to work. So I'm, I'm, I'm trying to balance all of that.
Been doing this a long time.
I know.
And I've, I've worked in many situations and I feel the same way.
This is unique.
Over, beyond the call of duty. But at some points, we have to have a little bit more common sense in, in air in, in favor of caution and then.
So we should close the supermarkets?
Then, I think, I think you're gonna see something within a, in a short period of time, to be honest with you. But I'm not in control. Bye.
Mr. Merritt. Everybody in the cushion's not running out to the supermarket before it shuts down.
Mr. Chairman. I think that if we look at this, we can expect this is changing government as we know. But it's also a trial error. We can't expect that this is gonna be not an annual recurrence. We could be facing something maybe more drastic next year. I mean, we've had influenza A, influenza B, now we have COVID-19. I mean, are we gonna completely annihilate this? Most likely not. So I think the way we need, we need to move forward is to become more versed in handling things remotely. You know, I mean, it's, I think Dana should have the ability to have, accept payments online.
Yeah, great.
And I think, you know, we've, we've been looking at e permitting. I take responsibility for not having e permitting online right now. We've gone around and around and around and actually got the grant approved for, but we're trying to find something that's cost-effective for the town so that we can do this online and not have daily visitation into the office. Now, my concern, of course, is that I'm the building inspector, I'm expected to go out and do inspections. If I don't, then everything stops. And I'm not talking about a single individual who might be banging nails. I'm talking about the plasterer, the plumber, the electrician, you know, the pipe fitter, all these different people who, you know, all of a sudden don't have work because I've decided, well, I, I can't do my job.
Huge economic getback to this.
Huge. So, you know, even though I'm at the age where I'm exposed, I'm not gonna stop my office. Our permits are online. Guys who are a little bit more tech savvy can go online, can download the permits, can file them electronically. We can take payments in our office by credit card. And I will be in my office to accept phone, or phone calls for inspections, and I will go out and do inspections. I'm kinda watching this, anticipating that this is gonna be on cable news, so at least maybe that word can go out. I really don't want my, I've had contractors in this morning, which is why I was late coming to this meeting, who were saying, what's gonna happen? You know, do I need to rush out today and get all my approvals for the work that I have to do in the next couple of weeks? I have a guy pulling a pool, pool permit. He says, geez, you know, can I do this and then maybe just leave it for a while? I'm like, no, I'm gonna be there doing inspections for you. So you can, it was up to them, but I can't stop them from doing what they wanna do. And even though Joe's not here at the moment, I kinda feel Joe's in the same, same situation.
We gotta function.
Yeah.
And we will, we will.
Yes.
We're just limiting the amount of interaction.
I agree.
Amongst people like we're supposed to be doing. But the government, no, we never said all the employees can go home and have a three-week vacation. That's not, that's not the.
No, I'm just saying, Mr. Gasper, that I think there's gonna be a certain funding requirement that the town's gonna have to accept to move forward, you know, and that, that really is on you guys. I don't know what that will be, but I mean, you know, should we have Chromebooks for every student in the school? Yeah, maybe we should, if this is gonna be something that we have to deal with on a yearly basis. But it's just, it's looking forward from here.
Right, there is an appropriation for that.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. Anyone else want to, yes, sir.
I just had a question, Mr. Merritt.
Mr. DeRosa, go first.
If we close the building, okay, how's that, how do you think that'd immediately affect you? Will you post a sign with your phone number that people can call? You say, you know, if we're gonna close the, the Potting Ways Building, you know, still have the employees and work that way?
Yeah, our phone number is posted on all of our permits. All of our permits are online. I will post a sign up front if we do close the building. And probably for Pam's sake, I think we probably should do that. Because really, she gets the most visitation. She has the biggest impact probably from any department other than the collector's office. But, you know, my line is, is direct. I don't necessarily go through the, whatever. You know, so it's, it's not gonna be that hard for me to, to close the building and still be in operation. I also have, you know, two young men and a co-op student. There's plenty of stuff that we can do. We're finishing off the bathroom with the Council on Aging. You know, we'll still be able to get in, especially if Heather's gonna be there. And we have projects that, that won't stop. So they can come in and they can work without problem and they kind of need my supervision. Not a lot, they're getting better and better as time goes on, but, you know, it's how, what they do on a daily basis, they look to me for, and I, I'm not gonna leave them hanging either.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Merritt. Yes, sir.
Well, good morning, everyone. My name's Ed Carron. I'm Assistant Director for the Town of the Cushion Office of Emergency Management. I'm gonna keep it short, just a couple of points. First of all, Director Bergeron and myself, I've been in constant contact with the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency and also some of the local directors in the area, passing information and seeing what's going on, making sure we're all on the same page. Just wanna let everyone know that all our resources, including a dedicated team of volunteers, are available to the town if necessary. Number two, the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency has strongly recommended that all communities begin tracking their expenses in regards to COVID-19. As you had mentioned, Mr. Chairman, this is new orders, how are they gonna be doing this and funds? With the declaration of a national emergency, now that opens up a lot of funds nationally. And FEMA is working closely with state emergency management agencies across the country and trying to figure out how this will be done. We don't know. This is not like a declared disaster for a hurricane, whereas most states have to get a certain financial threshold before federal funds come in. We don't know if that's how it's gonna work, what the threshold is going to be. If there is gonna be reimbursements, it's gonna be 75, 25. Federal government will pay 75% of it and the communities will pay 25%. So how this is gonna work, if it's gonna work, we don't know. If there is going to be a, a threshold set, it is very important that the communities submit these costs and so they can actually reach this threshold. As opposed to what happened down in the Cape when they had all the tornadoes, that threshold wasn't met. So no federal monies went down to the Cape to help them out.
So, Mr. Carron, to the department heads, to the extent that there are extraordinary expenses incurred as a result of, you know, what we're, what we're doing, overtime in the school perhaps, with the editorial staff doing what they're just, the first example that came to mind, or overtime hours in the police department for, for whatever reason, you know, that we're tracking those expenses and, and we make them part of whatever reimbursement request we can submit.
Disinfecting.
While, while we're early, while we're early in this and we're understanding.
Start now.
Yeah, start now.
I, I don't think we should be creating overtime and things of that nature, but as things come about, if they are related, we have to prove they are related to COVID-19.
Yes.
That should be done. We don't start carrying extra staff just because there's a virus out there. It's only if, you know, obviously, if we, the board would have to act in the public's best interest for the police department and say, you need to bring on more personnel, things of that nature. But, I mean, we can't.
That goes, that's things, things that don't need to be said. I mean, that's clearly.
Well, I know, it was kinda said that we, there's a threshold that needs to be met. I don't want everybody trying to put in expenses to try to.
Of course.
You know, 'cause we are, of course, we are sharing that burden 25%, albeit, but it's still 25%.
Not inflating our costs, we're trying.
Not only that, but it might not be covered. I mean, you know, you're putting something ahead of the cot and, and all of a sudden, you know, you're bringing in an extra police officer, firefighters or, well, it wouldn't probably so much affect DPW like it does in storms and everything else, but it's gonna really affect more of the public safety side of it. But, but everybody needs to keep track of what it's gonna cost in our COVID-19. But we never know, even if DPW buys hand sanitizers, extra sanitizers, we can just involve that. But again, the parameter, how, they're still working with the state, FEMA's still working with the state. But FEMA is just suggesting at this point, just keep track of, of all our expenses. And eventually, it will come down to us, what is allowed, what's not allowed, and we can go from there. So with that, that's about all I have to add.
Thank you, Mr. Carron.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? I thank you all.
Mr. DeRosa. Board of Health, is there any?
We started with the Board of Health. Anything else, Mr. Merritt? I didn't realize you was up there.
Action. We have a health agent for the Board of Health. Again, we've talked about it a little briefly, but I mean, we're just gonna go 100% by what Governor Baker's come up with. The Board of Health will, like I said, generally will, you know, back the Selectmen with decisions that are made. Certainly here and available for any decisions or any questions or concerns throughout the town and the department heads. We've been keeping up with it as much as anybody can. And just really we wanna stay at six feet apart. There's, take it seriously. There's obviously uncharted waters here, so.
The, I was just gonna say, the emergency powers of.
Yeah.
The emergency declaration creates a partnership between the Board of Selectmen that wasn't there before necessarily, you know, acts us, requires us to act together if we're changing the rules on, so.
Just ultimately, it's about the, the public being safe. And we're gonna do whatever we need to do, and I'm sure you'll do the same.
Mr. Merritt.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa. Thank you.
I'll ask. Kathy Muller, Treasury Collector, hi. So are we closing our doors to the general public or?
I don't think we're there yet. I don't think we're there yet. I don't think we've, I don't think we've gone there yet.
Okay, 'cause I can tell you, my staff has expressed deep concern about this virus and wanting to work at the window. And we're very busy.
Okay.
Yeah, tax, excise tax, paper excise tax.
Excise. I mean, they have the ability to pay online, they, we have a Dropbox, so, but they're, they're very concerned about it, as am I.
I'm, I'm sure a decision will be made before we depart today.
Okay.
Concerning that, I have a question, how are we set up as far as taking monies, expending monies? Is there a period of time that we should start to think that things are going to go awry? Like if we close down for a month, or not close down, but we'll still be able to accept? We'll be able to pay the employees, correct?
Correct. Yeah, we can, I can access payroll from my laptop anywhere, so. Yeah, we'll be able to pay the employees. People, like I said, can pay online for all their bills.
Okay, so it would be a period of time before there'd be a concern of the financial stability of the town?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, tax, real estate taxes come in through third-party vendors.
Uh, yeah.
A lot of people.
But I can send those files via my laptop, so.
Real estate taxes aren't due until the end of May, right?
Correct. And they already have the bills, beginning of May.
That's further out.
Beginning of May.
The only thing that's out right now is excise tax, and that's due at the end of this month?
Yes.
So, I mean, if people have a problem, if we were to close and people have a problem, we did it for Ms. LaMonte and the dog license issue, that's due at the end of the month. I mean, we're not going to penalize anybody because they're a couple of weeks late.
Right.
We're not open for business.
Right, we have the ability to waive interest.
To waive the excise tax, you can waive that interest on that payment, so we're not creating a problem.
Mr. Deroski, good?
Yeah, we've got six weeks, okay.
Others? Ms. LaMonte, have you had your hand up yet?
My question was along the same lines as Kathy. I just, I just want to make sure that we're being as clear as possible with the residents so they know whether, if they come to our door, whether we're going to be there or not to answer it for them. I think that's, that's critical. And again, anything we can do to not encourage them to come in and do everything online over the phone, I think that's, that's real importance for their safety and ours.
Anything else? From the board to the team?
We're going to be discussing these issues right now?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to cancel all public hearings to start.
Postpone.
Postpone any scheduled public hearing.
We're going to deal with PJ Keating, which is the near-term one, is the one we got to.
Planning board's got some, we just got the arrangements, the planning board, so I want to make sure that, you know, we don't have, we're saying one thing, so I would make a motion.
Cancel anything scheduled within the next.
To postpone any public hearings until further notice as far as the planning board goes.
So focus on the planning board, should we say for the next 30 days or 40 days?
Any, any other body of government other than the Board of Selectmen, because we're going to talk about PJ Keating separately.
Okay, so we'll go back.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're clear on what we're doing.
Any boards and committees that have public hearings scheduled will need to be postponed until further notice.
Board meetings, you're not canceling board meetings, are you?
No, no, public hearings, I said, public hearings.
So that would be the planning board and the PJ Keating, anything else come to mind with that?
Any public hearing, I don't know if anybody else has public hearings, I don't think I know, it's the planning board and us.
Any other ideas? No?
I'm sorry, what's the period of time, 30 days or 60 days?
Well, we're talking about that as well, I think we need to put a date certain on that.
And we do have one other public hearing. It's not very well attended, but it's required, the public hearing on school choice that we typically do in May, so we could also take that up in June, so.
So what's the new one for 30 days?
So for 30 days, yeah.
All public hearings.
So we can revisit it. Any, any public hearing scheduled within the next 30 days in the Town of Cushing, it should be rescheduled. Motion, second, Mr. Deroski, a motion?
Second.
Second, all in further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We're still going to have meetings, right?
Yes, yeah, we're talking about public hearings, I think we got to figure out.
Public hearings, yeah. Okay, we didn't hear anything from DPW, have any comments, concerns, still filling pottles? Let's. I mean, garbage, I suppose, pickups, all these things are going to be continuing on normally, so.
On the agenda, we had today the PJ Keating public hearing scheduled for March 24th. We certainly need to reschedule that, I think we need to pick a date to do that. And why don't we do that now?
Today's what? Oh, we postponed until, for 30 days.
It's the 24th.
Okay, but we postponed, we just approved.
Yep, so I think we're going to pick a date for that, so.
Okay, so today's the what, the 6th?
So I suggest we move that up to the, well, let's keep it on the Tuesday, maybe the 28th.
All right, that's what, six weeks from now?
April 28th?
Ms. Heebert, can you check with Town Council for the board? Just make sure that when we continue a public hearing, I know this, the nature of this continuance is, is.
So, yes.
Make sure that we're okay.
So for the PJ Keating hearing and talking to Town Council, we have notice requirements. So Town Council had suggested that the meeting still be attended by just the Chair of the Board of Selectmen on the day of the 24th, so that he could open the meeting and postpone it to a date certain. Again, where we have the restriction on having hearings, and especially hearings at the school, we're being advised to tell all people, don't show up on the 24th, the Chair will open by himself and set it out to a date certain so that we don't have to go through all of the notice requirements again with sending out all the certified mailings and things of that nature. We'll certainly still let people know, and that's why he suggested picking a date today so we can let people know as early as possible a new date. But the technicality of postponing the hearing, again, it would have to be the Chair showing up and opening it and picking that date certain on the actual hearing night.
Yeah, so on the 24th, I'll be standing on the curb in front of a locked, in front of a locked door.
Yes. But at least that way, we can, we can.
But is the 28th okay with the everyone?
Yeah.
Did you want to go that far out? 30 days, we said we were doing public hearings, so 30 days would bring us somewhat closer to the.
Well, I'm trying to keep it, I'm trying to keep it on the Tuesday, 30 days, 24th to 24th, and this, the following Tuesday's the 28th, so I'm just trying to, you know, 30 days is the 24th, is the, is the 24th, give or take. And the first Tuesday after that's the 28th, so that's the date I'm suggesting.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
If we're keeping it on a Tuesday.
Okay. We just don't want to be conflicted when we postpone public hearings for 30 days, Mr. Cabral, that's all. I don't want anyone to have a reason to handle this.
Okay, we're postponing of the, right.
We're canceling, we canceled everything that's occurring in the next 30 days.
30 days.
To be rescheduled to a date subsequent to that.
By 28th.
I don't think we have a problem.
April 28th.
April 28th is fine. Mr. Deroski, good on the 28th?
Yes, I am. Pam, I just have a question. Town meeting is the first Tuesday of May?
The town meeting? Monday.
First Monday, which would be?
May 11th.
Second Monday.
Our second Monday, I'm sorry.
Second Monday, okay.
That's the election.
And we decided we don't need that.
First Monday in April.
I'm sorry.
That's, no, that's okay.
Town meeting is on?
May 11th.
May 11th.
Monday.
Very good.
Yep.
As it stands now.
And, and most things are subject to change depending on this virus spreading.
One more question. If you've got an employee, let's say one of the guys tell me he's sick, they got the flu.
Stay home.
Stay home.
But do they stay home for two weeks, do they, you know, they come back in a day or two, you know what I mean? Or you say, hey, stay home for two weeks and don't come back out?
I think we'll define, Ms. Heebert should define some policy around the symptoms of, with Chief Gallagher, and define the symptoms of these things so that we're not getting employees that going, hey, I'm going to use COVID-19 and take a week's vacation, you know what I mean? You know, we got to, you got to, as a department head, do your job to make sure that you're speaking to the employee. And I mean, you can obviously tell if somebody's sick and not, and, you know, if they're, if they're standing on the side you at four o'clock in the afternoon drinking a beer, they're probably not sick, right? And saying they're going to be out sick, so, I mean, it's common sense practice, what all our department heads would say. An employee comes in and or calls in and says, hey, you know, I'm not feeling well, that's a regular sick day. Well, if you, if you feel that it's related and you have symptoms of COVID-19, you're going to be paid. That's part of the legislation that the government, the federal government has just passed, that you will not miss pay.
I think we're thinking the opposite, we, we have an employee that is already sick with a cold, and I think they just have a cold, should we allow them to come to work?
I think I should stay.
I think we're going to, right, discuss this in detail and come up with a plan because once again, if someone is diagnosed with COVID-19, now is your department shut down because you've been exposed to them and do you self-quarantine for two months, I mean, two weeks?
Here's the challenge.
Decisions that are going to.
I'm sorry, Mr. Deroski.
No, no.
No, finish.
No, I'm all set.
I mean, the challenge we've got, and we've talked about all, you know, taking this, not taking this seriously enough and taking it too seriously and where do you draw the line? And I would say that that's the case, the same thing with an individual who says, I don't feel well. Do you tell them to come in because they feel they've got a cold? Or do you say, no, you need to stay out for two weeks? I don't, I don't have the answer to that. I think the guidance we're getting from our government is if they believe they've got something related to this virus, to the coronavirus, that they're supposed to stay away for two weeks. So, you know, I'm the one who's been saying, let's not take this too seriously, but, you know, conversely, if somebody says, I feel like I've got a cold coming on, or I feel like I've got a mild fever, I think they're supposed to, you know, they can't get tested because the test kits, I don't think are readily available. So I think the guidance we're supposed to give them is, stay away.
Yeah, if, every employee has a sick bank, so we, I don't think, but every employee has a sick bank. So when you have an employee that says, hey, I'm sick, you can't deny them, you can't tell them to come into work.
I don't, I don't.
They're going to use sick time. So if they, if they are discovered to have, after numerous days out on their own sick bank, and they are discovered to have COVID-19, okay, worst-case scenario, then we will reimburse this sick bank and we will pay them outright and away, because the government said so. Right, Julie, isn't that the way the government is?
I don't know.
I think, I think they're, I'm not, I'm not fully sure and I'll check on that, but I know that they're at least allowed to use their sick time.
They're allowed to use their sick time because they're sick.
I'm saying, if you have COVID-19, it's something different.
No, I'm just asking a question, you know, what happens at that point?
You're sick, you're sick.
You're sick, you're sick, yeah.
Calling sick.
But I mean, the guy calls in sick, what if he does have it? This is what, we don't know, this is what I'm getting at. Do I say, okay, you feel better today, come on in, or did you have it, you're supposed to stay out two weeks?
Dan, I think we will establish for our employees of the town, you know, a.
Yeah, no, and I do have on here, so, and I think.
A protocol, I should say.
If somebody is, if somebody is tested positive, I think that the state is taking over and ordering quarantines. So I think that's kind of out of our hands, you can't force them to come in, they're, they're on a mandated quarantine. But we are, I think, we'll be, you know, able to put something together to encourage employees if they're not feeling well, don't come into work. Obviously, if you have symptoms of the Corona specifically, you know, we, if you're able to get tested, it'd be great, but if not, if you, if you think that it could be Corona-related, yeah, use best judgment and stay home for the two weeks to solve quarantine in that case. If you just have a cold and it goes away, you know, and you're feeling better, I would say, you know, best judgment and come back in. But that is something I want to talk about in terms of not just people who are sick, but I know now where schools are closed, I'm sure that there are parents who may not have, you know, childcare or they're, if a family member is sick, and so I think we definitely need to look at putting something out so employees have some guidance on where, where they can take time off.
A lot of the contracts have that, right?
Well, and a lot of.
I'm thinking of bereavement time, family, family sick time.
The unions also have, you know, in their contracts, if you're out for a certain number of days, you need a doctor's note. So I think we need to work with the unions to be able to say, you know, people probably aren't going to be able to get to a doctor's office, you know, to get checked all the time, to get a note. So these are things that we should be looking at to try to update employees and let them know where they, where they should be.
I think we'll try to be flexible, flexible in support of our employees.
Anything in the FMLA that they, they talk about that, the Family Medical Leave Act? So I think the federal government has already put out some guidelines on that as well for parents that would have to stay home with their children and things of that nature. So we have to review all of those policies. We'll take it as, on an as-needed basis for now, before sick time becomes an epidemic.
Right.
Anything else from the department heads?
I'm worried about.
Thank you.
I think.
Thank you.
No, I think just let them.
Don't get yelled at.
I don't want to keep the dialogue back and forth. Take a break. Absolutely. I think we take a, really good, we take a five-minute recess. Thank you.
Okay, we're taking a five-minute recess, we're on five.
Five, we're on, okay. Continuation of Selectmen's meeting, March 16th, we took a brief recess, back in session. Discussion regarding Town Hall and continued operations of Town Hall, Town Hall offices, gentlemen, any thoughts?
You know, the concern of our citizens, of our employees are essential, I think, time to make decisions concerning that. We've had some discussions this morning about what to do concerning, excuse me, Town Hall and closing it to the public, and I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that, and we could put it that we close at noon today. If you want to put a time on it, effective immediately, that works also for me.
Are we open or closed, is that what you're suggesting?
Open for business.
Yep.
Town employees expected to come to work, that sort of thing. But the Town Hall buildings, Parting Ways Building, the Fire Department, any other buildings that have public coming in and out of them are closed?
With signage that says if you need.
Until further notice.
Is there a telephone number to call?
Has a telephone number on it?
We can put a sign on every door with, you know, Parting Ways, for instance, these are all the numbers for all of the relevant departments, we'll post everything online and on social media so people will know, and I don't know if you want this as part of your motion, but if you decide to do this, but again, to suggest having people call departments and appointments that are necessary that we may need to come face-to-face with a, with a resident to complete. I'm thinking like the town clerk, if there's something that she needs to hand off to somebody or have a signature, we can do appointments as needed on an as-needed basis.
Thoughts, Mr. Gaspar?
Yeah, like I said, I think it's important our employees show up at work. There's no reason for everybody to stay home because most of them won't, they'll be out gallivanting wherever they can. I think it's what we need to do is just have our employees in the facilities to accommodate our residents via phone call and close the buildings, as Mr. Deroski said, to the public. For the time being, and we'll see where this virus, you know, ends up. I'm hoping that this thing ends sooner rather than later, but we, none of us know the reality of this virus at this day. So it's better to take precautionary measures now than to deal with consequences later on.
My, my comment, I think I've made, I've let people, made it clear where I think. I think it's, it's underreaction versus overreaction. I think, I think as government, we have an obligation to set an example for the community, and I think that example means we're open, we take precautions, we use hand sanitizer, we use disinfectant, but we remain open. And again, I use the example of the, you know, the stop, the supermarket's open, CVS is open, there are other, and that may change, and their hours may become limited, but they're being asked, my company's open. And I'm not saying because I've got to do it, the Town Hall's got to do it, but I think government needs to lead, and I think government is, is what holds society together. And I think, I don't think it's appropriate for government to close. And, you know, regardless of, regardless of how essential the operations of any particular department are, I, I feel that we need to lead by example, and I think that example is we're, we're open and we take precautions and we're careful, but that is my opinion. But is there a motion?
Yeah, we, let me get one.
Yeah, go.
We are open, there's a difference, we are open, we're just limiting the traffic from the public, that's all that we're doing. So there will be cases where we'll open the door under certain circumstances for one individual to walk in if they have that kind of urgency to do so. We're not closing government offices, they are open.
Okay, well, I guess my point would be, I think that's locking the doors to the community is, we are open. Agreed, I think that's, I think that's a step too far, but I get, I get your point and your point of clarification, it's appropriate. So is there a motion, gentlemen?
Make a motion to close town administrative buildings, Fire Department, Parting Ways Building, Town Hall to the general public immediately.
Second, Mr. Gaspar?
The chief's here, I mean, he mentioned the Fire Department, I mean, we're.
Well, you had mentioned building, you know, burning permits.
Excuse me, we will discourage foot traffic. And we do have the vestibule, we'll keep it locked, there's a button to summon the firefighter and it's the glass partition. So we will limit the access into the station beyond the enclosed vestibule.
We can't really close emergency personnel.
Correct, no.
Even under a state of emergency.
No, you're not closing.
You'll still be responding to fires.
And we will respond to everything, and we will go above and beyond if anybody needs us.
It's all non-essential personnel is under a state of emergency, so I'll second Mr. Deroski's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we doing it as of noon today?
We're doing it effective, effective immediately, okay. Locked, locked, chief locked the doors? Ms. Heebert, do you have a report?
I just want to add that quickly, things that we've already been doing to make sure that the buildings are as clean as possible, making sure that everyone has access to sanitizer. making sure that everyone has access to sanitizer, has access to sanitizing wipes and sprays, keeping their own areas clean. And in addition, and chief, you can add to this, we've purchased, I don't know what they're going to be called, electromagnetic foggers.
Yes.
That will essentially, you can spray the fog into a room and it will disinfect everything inside the room. So we'll be using those to make sure that all of the buildings are as clean as possible.
Thank you. Nothing else?
That's it.
The one, the only item, I mean, we've been here for, I don't even know what that clock's running.
Two hours.
We've been here for two, we have two hours and change. And we haven't talked at all about the one item that we did have on our agenda. We've talked about everything else. We've got the, you know, initially, we were coming together to talk about our thoughts regarding the PJ Keating, the requested license by PJ Keating. I don't know if we want to start that discussion at all because I think we could do another hour of that, and I'd rather not, quite honestly.
Mr. Chairman, for better than 30 days, so we can postpone that discussion until.
Table.
Thank you. That's the answer I was hoping for.
I think at the table, the PJ Keating.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. We've got a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night. We will be here. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.